One.
Good evening, everybody, and happy Thanksgiving in advance. This is the November twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two Board of Education meeting. Before we begin, if you could take a second, just take a look at your phones and make sure they're on silent or vibrate. And when you know that, please join me with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic through which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Okay, first item is roll call. Mr. Hatfield.
All right, President McFarland.
Here.
Vice President Roush.
Here.
Secretary Hatfield is here. Treasurer Lotterbach is not. Member Baker?
Here.
Member Blazy is not. Member Frazee is not. We do have a quorum.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving into item number two, our consent agenda, we have item two point one, approval of the minutes from October seventeen, two thousand and twenty-two regular meeting. Item two point two is a list of staff being recommended for hire. Item two point three is a list of staff who have announced their resignation as well as the effective dates. Item two point four is approval of the system's bills for the month of September two thousand and twenty-two in the amount of ten million, four hundred seventy thousand, eight hundred and eighteen dollars. Approval is recommended. Item two point five is a request to authorize legal payments to a number of legal entities, all of which are listed on the agenda. Hey, Brad.
Hey.
Item two point six is the approval of the two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four and two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five school year calendars. And with that, I will accept the motion.
Move to approve items two point one through two point six is listed in the consent agenda. Support?
Motion by Mr. Roush, support by Mr. Hatfield. Any additional discussion regarding the consent agenda items? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, item three point one, Mr. Sherwood, Shining Stars.
Our first shining star this month is Winnie Binger. Yeah, she had these uncomfortable moments. Winnie's MPS dirty began in two thousand and eighteen. She started her employment as a paraprofessional in Seaboard Elementary, still a dedicated leader of the world today. Winnie received her bachelor's degree from Southern Connecticut State University in early childhood development. Winnie was nominated for a shining star by MPS College. Among their comments were the following: Winnie is amazing, and the students that she works with, and she has worked with in the past. She truly has a caring heart, helps not only the students, but the teachers as well. She takes time to make sure that students are truly doing well, takes interest in knowing what's going on in their lives. She is constantly seeking out opportunities to better our school environment, and support students and staff. Winnie has a clear understanding that relationships with students are very important, and help with Winnie's process. It's a true pleasure to work with Winnie daily, and she is a purgament to all. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And our second shining star is Keith Seibert. You can stand up here, too, and I know it's really not Keith's personality to go on stand-up here. It's well deserved, so. Keith joined the MPS team in nineteen ninety-eight as a physical education teacher at Northeast Middle School, and taught PE at Northeast in nineteen years, along with coaching several athletic teams, including track and swimming. Two thousand and fifteen, Keith began his current role as assistant principal at Northeast. Keith earned his bachelor's degree in education, and has also his master's degree in school principalship from Central Michigan University. Keith was nominated for the shining star by MPS College. Among their comments were the following: Keith is the definition of professional. His work ethic, organizational skills, and passion for MPS students, educational wellbeing are unparalleled. In a world that shrinks to focus on the negative, Keith remains a positive influence and a voice for colleagues and stakeholders. In addition to being a model colleague and administrator, Keith is a dedicated family man. By his busy work schedule, he always finds a way to support his children in their athletic, academic, and extracurricular adventures. He not only supports his children, but cheers them on and encourages all MPS students. MPS is blessed to have an employee like Keith. Keith's character causes the impact in our stakeholders. Congratulations, Keith.
Congratulations.
Come on, Albert.
All right, congratulations both. And that will bring us to item three point two, Special Services. We have a couple of presenters, Jessica Brunzel and Anthony Gates.
Good evening, and thank you for having us as presenters this evening. Although it says special education update fall two thousand and twenty-two, I feel like it should say winter with the weather we've been having lately. When forty degrees feels like a reprieve, like, it hit us fast. So what we're gonna do is just really a brief overview of special services here at MPS, what it looks like, what it's all about, what we're working on, what we're looking forward to, and just shining a spotlight on the hard work we all do and put in for students. So we'll get started with a little bit of trend data, and I'll let Mr. Gates go ahead and go.
Yeah, so, yeah, thank you again for having us, and we'll start off our discussion with just some overview of the trend data. And so first, I'll just kind of establish a baseline of what the data is that we're looking at, and so that is specifically the number of students receiving special education services in proportion to the number of students within the district. And so when we take a look at our trend data, then there back the last several years from two thousand and sixteen, seventeen to twenty-two, twenty-three, we will notice that there is a slight increase in our trend data. We're sitting at around fifteen point seven percent right now of special education students in the district receiving services. That equates to about one thousand, one hundred and ninety-one students receiving special education supports. I think it is important to note that as a district team, we continue to build out our MTSS process and provide opportunities, additional opportunities for students to receive supports and interventions outside of the IEP process.
Thank you, and I just wanna note, the verbiage there is intentional, students receiving special education services. We, as a special services team, are dedicated to making sure students are seen as general education students first, and that special education really is a service provided and not a place. It is something that the students receive. So who do we service? We service all eligible students attending MPS school from developmental kindergarten over at Carpenter, all the way to our post-secondary center at the community, our post-secondary program at the community center. So really, students between as young as four years old and as old as twenty-six years old. We service all eligible students at the Midland County Juvenile Care Center. We service all eligible students in the parochial school setting. We service all students that are registered with MDE through our homeschool process, and we also service all eligible students at the Midland County Jail. So you can see that our services are vast across the county. So that is just a snip of who we service. So what services do we provide to those students? Resource Room Programming. So typically, at the elementary level, that's what we would call more of a pull-out service. And the reason we say that is because we actually pull them out of the general education setting typically to receive that service. At the elementary level, we're really talking about direct intervention to a student where you would need to work more in a small group setting or an individual setting with that student. At the secondary level, though, we do have what we call co-teaching models and departmentalized classes. And so those are more of what we would consider a push-in model. So those are more within the general education setting. We have programs for students with emotional impairments. We have classrooms that we call collaborative rooms, and really, that is resource room for behavioral needs. We have programs for students with mild cognitive impairments. We have our transition program. We provide occupational therapy, physical therapy, school social work, and speech and language therapy. So quite a bit of services that we provide to our students here.
Yeah, and so with that discussion, then, of services provided, I think first and foremost, when we talk about services and providing those services, it's premised around the idea of eligibility. And so within the state of Michigan, when we think about eligibility, there are thirteen eligibility areas. Within those eligibility areas, there are specific criteria that have to be met for a student to be determined to be eligible. And so ultimately, what we're looking at then as teams is eligibility there and present, and then from there, building the discussion around what types of programs and services then are going to be appropriate based on eligibility and the specific needs of the student to be able to support them throughout their school day and to meet their educational needs. That is kind of encapsulated, then, that discussion within the IEP team process. It's a collaborative process that we embark on with our parents, our families. Students involved in some of the upper grade levels were appropriate, and ultimately, as an IEP team, taking a look at that data and using that data to drive those decisions that we're making about what services are going to be implemented and put in place to support that student, what programs are gonna be put in place to support that student, what accommodations need to look like, and what needs to be put in place there to support those students. And throughout that discussion, the team is having conversations around what does this then look like within the school setting for that student, what does it look like within their day? And that's where that then lends itself to that conversation of special education as a service. We're looking to deliver this service to students. It's not a place, and how does that fall into the students' needs in terms of the least restrictive environment in which they can be educated in to help disclose those gaps that are present within that data and present within and documented within their IEP. And so that leads us to this continuum diagram here that I think does a really nice job of providing just a general overview of kind of how you can look at and recognize what some of the general environmental pieces are when we talk about least restrictive. And so I'll kind of just first break down the diagram itself, and then just talk a little bit about how this relates to specific student needs. So first and foremost, least restrictive environment, as you can see emphasized here, would start off at the bottom of this continuum being our regular classrooms. These would be students, you know, engaging with their typically developing peers, not receiving special education services or supports. And then we're building from there, from that base, essentially in terms of the level of, you could call it restrictiveness, you know, the level of intensity of services that a student might need to be successful. And so, you know, slightly above that, you do have students that are receiving consultative services within the district, which we provide. You have students that may be in a regular classroom but are receiving co-taught supports, as Ms. Brunzel just noted. From there, you would go on, moving on the continuum to some of our students that maybe need a more intense level of support in a small group setting or a separate, more specialized setting to be able to support their educational needs there. And the continuum just builds from there, up all the way up to one of the most restrictive placements, might be a homebound or hospitalized setting. And so the thing that I think remember when we're talking about least restrictive, though, is it's the student's least restrictive environment. So depending on the intensity, the frequency of those services that we are providing to that student, what is the most least restrictive environment to them to meet them where they're at and provide them with the education they need is gonna look different from one student to the next. Some of our more impacted students are going to need maybe a more specific placement in a small group classroom, where some of our students that are in a different spot based on the data and their needs may very well be supported more appropriately, and their least restrictive environment may be in a regular classroom with just some consultative supports and services.
So programs in our district are located all over. As you can see, we offer Resource Room Programming in every building in our district, but as the incidence, as the population, the need is less, we have less programming, and so we don't need it in every single building. That just wouldn't be sustainable or feasible. So then we are specific in what buildings we do house programs. And again, that's based on student need. Lots of factors go into that data about where they're housed.
Yeah, so some celebrations, some good things to kind of note that we're doing, the work not only as a district as a whole, but the special services team as well. I think as a district, there's a definitely a solid degree of focus around providing a comprehensive continuum of services to meet the needs of all of our students, which you've kind of seen when you look at the different programs that we're offering across the district and the, and kind of what special services looks like, the number of students that we're servicing and supporting, and kind of how we're engaging in that work through the variety of programs we offer lends itself to that idea of a comprehensive continuum for services. In addition to that, we do have a low student-to-teacher ratio, and particularly at the secondary level, when it comes to caseloads. This is allowing our special education service providers to be more readily available, to meet with their caseload students, to engage in conversations when, you know, challenges do arise, to be able to problem-solve and troubleshoot those. We do have an extremely professional staff that continues to utilize and practice best practices with what they're doing in their daily teaching, which we continue to build upon as a district through professional development, as an ongoing process to have them, provide them with opportunities for growth. And lastly, as a special services team, we also have increased our compliance and state performance indicators. One of those in particular, the B thirteen indicator, which is a transition compliance indicator where we are working with students to determine what some of their outcomes and objectives might be after high school. We, the last two years, have been a hundred percent on that, which has been a celebration for the special services team to be able to achieve that, in addition to other indicators that we've shown growth on. So continued growth and good things happening within the district.
So Anthony and I were working on who was gonna, who was gonna present what, and I said, I'll do, you do the positive things. I'll take on the areas of work. So that's what we'll hit next. But I do just wanna touch on the extremely professional staff. This is my third year in the district as Director of Special Services, and I can't say enough good things about the staff, the teachers, the paraprofessionals, the administrative assistants, the principals, the assistant principals. Blown away. I moved my students here after my first year here, my own children. MPS, we have a lot to celebrate. We're doing a really great job, so. Areas of growth. So educational environments, as we're talking about that least restrictive environment, we really should and have more of a push, and we're looking to have more of a push, to have more students in that general education setting for a larger portion of their day. And getting creative in how to make sure that they have that access, but we're also adequately supporting them. And although we do provide that vast array of services, many of our systems do create separate classrooms or rosters. So when we talk about, you know, that classroom for students who are more impacted, we just need to make sure that we're using that data to tell the story about the student. As special educators, we wanna wrap around our kids and just say, oh, we just wanna give you all of the supports because we love you and we just wanna see you be successful. But we really need to allow data to tell the story because sometimes all of that support can turn into areas where a student may not need all of that, and then we're really acting as a hindrance. So we just need to make our decisions based on student need and data. Also, continued growth in student outcomes and seamless transitions for post-secondary goals. So every student at the age of sixteen that has an IEP also has a transition plan, and we're working really hard to make sure we're involving our community stakeholders in those conversations. So whether that be MRS or the ARC or lots of different community pieces and stakeholders, they're coming in together to have those conversations with us, maybe even disability services from the collegiate level to make sure students get accommodations when they go on to college, but just to make sure that we're supporting them as they exit our system also. What questions might you have?
That's a lot to unpack.
Woo!
First of all, wonderful presentation, and I'm so proud of your entire team. I mean, you guys clearly lead by example, and we're very appreciative of the work that you do.
Thank you very much.
Uh, one question I was, I have, just in your last comment, can you give us some examples of some transition points or some post-high school, what's going on post-high school? How do you track them? How do you follow them? How do we ensure ongoing success?
Yeah, yeah. So I mean, a really big part, and especially where things, just as an example, where things really start to come together as a student senior year. And so we do things like reaching out to get consent, to invite these outside agencies to these IEP meetings, so that way students can be enrolled on caseloads, and so they can have a direct contact that can serve as that liaison, that transition support after high school. And so those are people like Ms. Brunzel noted, like Disability Network, like Michigan Rehab Services, where they can be brought on board to help a student make that jump. I always like to tell students and families, you know, my biggest goal for you is that when you walk across that stage and I get to celebrate you getting that diploma, I also get to celebrate knowing that you know what the next step is. And so walking away from that transition process, knowing that we have a plan in place and what that next step is going to be, is kind of really the key crux of that. We also take students, we support a trip to like Delta College, for example, to get students over there to meet a disability services office, so they understand, even if I don't go to Delta College, I understand that colleges have disability services offices. This is what they look like. This is where I need to go to take my IEP, to be able to sit down and have a conversation with somebody to say, this is what I need. So those are just some things that we do to make sure that the follow-through happens in terms of setting them up with the right people to know that they are gonna be well on their way to take that next step and to make that jump, so.
Fantastic.
MDE also partners with Wayne State, and they do a post-secondary survey. So all of our students with IEPs that exit our system take a voluntary survey when they do leave to say, are you employed? Are you, are you in college? Where are you living? Are you living independently? All of those pieces. And so then that data, if they're willing to provide it back to us, is fed back to us from MDE. So we do get some outcomes-based data on that, too.
Thank you. So one of your slides showed a table of services MPS provides and then a couple that ESA provides.
Yeah.
Can you talk a little bit more about the partnership with ESA, and how do we determine which services MPS does in-house and what ESA comes in for?
Yeah, so our ESA is there, so everything is broken down into our ISD plan. So that's where kind of all of the superintendents meet, and they decide with the ESA what services will be offered where. And really, the ESA serves as a service provider for low-incidence populations. So we're talking where to make up a classroom, you would, you would need students countywide, not even just system-wide. So those are the services they provide. Our partnership with them really hinges on that least restrictive environment. So I think there is only a handful of classrooms that they have that are not put back out into the local districts to give access to those typically developing peers. So whether they are only pushing out to get access at lunchtime and recess because that's what their need is, or they're coming into our classrooms for almost their entire day, maybe with paraprofessional support or whatnot, we're there to provide that access.
Yeah. I would just, I would just add to, a part of that is, is that then, you know, that process of then, you know, as those students might develop and grow, the goal eventually is, as they're engaging in that work with those students to close those gaps that they might have, that those students are able to transition back to, you know, their local school and out into a more traditional school setting. If you think of the, that least restrictive continuum, the ESA would be a higher level on that continuum than what we would typically be offering within our programming in our school setting.
I think it's important to fill the note to its county, so they service all four school districts. So when you talk about low incident rate, their services really help those smaller school districts as well, you know, many of them we have. And then the room arrangements, there's a classroom in Bullet Creek, but predominantly, the rest of their rooms are rented from us.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
So it's also true that from different things that you talked about after graduation, that also it could be going to a four-year university, taking your plan with you. These could be very high-achieving individuals that are part of this program as well, so.
Absolutely.
I would say that's the majority.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, put you on the spot here.
Okay.
So what is the identification and onboarding into the program in Midland Public Schools?
Of students?
Yes.
Identification. So we have what's called a child find obligation.
Okay.
So any student that we question that may have a disability or a parent brings in writing, they say, hey, we, you know, we think our student may have a disability and would need special education services. MDE outlines beautifully exactly what we need to do in that, in that process. So we have ten days to set up what's called a read meeting, where we look at existing data and determine whether or not to move forward with educational testing for disability services.
And then if they move forward to the next step, who does the testing?
Yeah, so we have school psychologists that do the testing, whether that be IQ testing. It depends on the disability that we're really looking at. So our school social workers may do some assessments. Definitely, observations are involved, teacher input's involved, parent input is involved. It's really across the board, and it does depend on what disability we're really looking at. So if we're talking about a student maybe with a learning disability, that certainly would be a school psychologist, the teacher, the parent. If we're talking about more of a behavioral, you know, more impacted by social, emotional pieces, school social work, occupational therapist, perhaps a speech therapist. And Michigan Administrative Rules for Special Education outline exactly who must be involved in every single evaluation, depending on what the need is.
Okay. And then identifying those, is it typically at the elementary level, or the middle, or the high school, or across the board?
It really can happen at any time. We would hope, I would say we have more initial, what we call initial evaluations at the elementary level, but it is not uncommon to have initial evaluations at the middle school level or even the high school level.
And child find goes all the way to birth, and so the ESA is responsible from the zero through four.
Yep.
Okay.
So Michigan's zero through twenty-six, as Jessica showed, and, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we're the only state in the nation.
That's correct. Federal law stops services at twenty-one, but then Michigan, and you can always do more. You just can't do less. And so Michigan Administrative Rules for Special Education take it to the age of twenty-six.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you both. We really appreciate your time.
I like the Q and A part better than the presentation. Thank you all very much.
All right, that will bring us to item four, Request to Address the Board. And oh my goodness, it has been two years, maybe longer, but there is not a name on this list. Is there anybody that came in late that maybe didn't get to write their name down that would like to address the board? Otherwise, yes, sir. Good evening.
Good evening. How are you guys doing?
Great.
So I'm circling back. Unfortunately, I don't know why I haven't seen this before. Do a document right here, that the Board of Education proclamation that was unanimously approved August third, two thousand and twenty. Amazing piece of history, where we finally eliminated racism in Midland. So it is named, Resolution to Change the System. Eliminate Racism, Create More Equitable, Inclusive Schools for All. Change the System, DEI. At first, I thought, man, these are just Marxist buzzwords used to destroy American culture. Simpleton slogans, used in politics to control the masses. Apparently, five members of this board kneeling for the anthem. No, I'll take this seriously, as if somebody in Midland actually wrote this. It indicates that MPS has had a long history of discrimination. If this is true, why have the administrators that exhibited bias and racism in their hiring decisions still work for MPS? Regardless, this practice has, for all of my life, been against the law. Where's the state police? And apparently, there have been longstanding board members asleep at the wheel, or maybe intentionally discriminating against minorities, when the administration recommended individuals to be employed. Why have these board members not resigned? They were here when the racist hiring occurred, and they were here when the proclamation was adopted. Either what you did was furtherance of a racist MPS system, which is what the proclamation seems to say, and you all should be gone, or there was no racism, and the proclamation was adopted just for virtue signaling, and maybe to bring about the change that's dividing us now. Which is it? Of course, the document is absolutely ridiculous, and I only cover one small section of it here, as it continues to attempt to correct this misjustice by hiring based on race and ethnicity, regardless of the proportion of the population. The literal definition of racism. Notice how this is just bringing us all together, isn't it? Today, those who preach the gospel of diversity, be it multiculturalism, critical race theory, or any other novel hearsay, don't care about what unifies us. Often, they resent it, and instead actively promote what makes us different, dividing us. In two thousand and four, seventy-four percent of white Americans and sixty-eight percent of black Americans told a Gallup poll that race relations in America were good. Last year, those numbers are forty-three and thirty-three percent, respectively. It turns out that a decade and half of relentlessly racializing every issue in America just made everyone feel less happy, less trusting, and less like they're part of a unified America. People ask why we don't have respect for you guys, and that's not true. We do respect you guys. We just don't have a place to debate this garbage. You all accept beliefs from a bias system that without a doubt is coming after our children. You fail to protect the children, don't give us a voice in the debate. We don't owe you any courtesies in the three minutes that we get.
Anybody else didn't get a chance to write their name down? Yes, ma'am. Good evening. Thank you for joining us.
Hi, thanks. I'm Deb Mead. I just wanted to say thank you very much for the diversity, equity, and inclusion that you guys worked on and are, I didn't prepare any formal comments, but I really appreciate your efforts. I do also feel that Um, I do also feel that, um, you know, the presentation we just saw is, was related to special education and 15% of our students, um, have those services. Um, two of my boys are two of those students and, um, I'm very proud of them. They do really a great job at Midland Public Schools. Super great staff, people, a lot of caring people. And I really appreciate everything that the teachers and administrators do to support them. And, um, diversity and equity inclusion, um, includes students that have special needs. And, um, sometimes that, you know, message isn't at the forefront, but, and other people might not realize that special education is part of diversity, equity, and inclusion. So I just wanted to mention that and thank you very much for all of your efforts.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to close, uh, public comment and we're going to move on to item five, curriculum, instruction, and assessment. And Mr. Hatfield, I think you're going to read our study committee minutes?
Yes, uh, the meeting, these minutes are for, was from October 17th. Uh, members present, Lynn Baker, uh, chair, uh, chair, Brad Blasey, myself, Penny Miller-Nelson, Mike Sharo, uh, guests present, Mary Chilton, Dirk DeBoer, and DeAndre Hogan. Uh, we met, uh, that meeting at Northeast Middle School. We started at 1:30, uh, we started with a diversity, equity, and inclusion update. Uh, DeAndre provided an update on the progress being made with the images, celebrations, and events section of the assessment tool. Uh, we then went through a data review. Mary Chilton guided a discussion about MPS achievement and student growth data. The committee discussed points of pride and opportunities for growth and improvement. We then had an ESSR update and a classroom visit. Dirk DeBoer discussed how the Northeast staff is working intentionally to support student learning and growth. He described several strategies that have been made available through ESSR funds. The committee visited a math seminar classroom and had the opportunity to interact with students. We adjourned at 2:45, uh, and the next meeting was actually held today. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And I have item 5.2.
I have that one.
Okay, Penny?
Uh, yes, uh, that was a subcommittee meeting. We convened on October 28th at 10:00 a.m. here at the administration building. Uh, Mr. Hatfield, Mr. Roush, uh, Mr. Bruton, uh, Kim Funnel, who is our state and federal grants person, and myself were present. Midland Public Schools is applying for grant funds through Public Act 144 of 2022, Section 98(c) Learning Loss. The grant plan was presented to the subcommittee members. Funds will be used for interventions, specialized programs, and resources that promote student success. These include the Retiree Intervention Program, Student Resource Centers, and NWEA assessments and intervention tools. The specific amount of the grant is not yet known. Therefore, the grant plan may be updated and communicated as additional information becomes available. We adjourned at 10:23 a.m.
All right, thank you Penny. Uh, moving on, we're on item six. Item 6.1 is, uh, finance facilities and operations, study committee minutes. Uh, Phil?
Yep, the committee met on November 7th, um, in the conference room nine. John Lotterbach, Brad Blasey, myself, Mike Sharo, and Brian Bruton were present. Item number one was, were the, uh, September financials, which were reviewed. Revenue variances were due to shift in the hold harmless tax collection rates, uh, from last year to this year. Expense variances are attributed to salary and benefit increases, HVAC project at Northeast, and the technology repair outsourcing contract. Item number two was the maintenance van purchase. Administration will propose reordering two cargo vans to be utilized by the maintenance department. Funds for the vans were carried over from the 2122 general fund budget. Item number three was the MCV personal property values. Last March, Midland Co-Generation Venture petitioned to move personal property values amongst owned parcels that are subject to different tax rates for the last three years. The reconciliation process between MPS, MCV, and the state will occur in, in the late fall or early winter. MPS will be responsible for the interest on the value returned to MCV if a finding is made. Um, item number four is summer tax collection resolution. The board will be asked to approve an annual request to the city of Midland to collect half of the school's tax levy, including debt service during the summer tax collection period. And item number five was the MPS pool. Um, the committee discussed the status of the infrastructure and equipment at the pool facility. This, uh, site visit will be planned for an upcoming FFO meeting. Our next meeting will be on December 5th at 5:00 p.m.
Okay, thank you Phil.
And just a clarification on the maintenance van, why Phil read it as reordering is obviously because of supply chain. You never showed up of the ones that we ordered this past year.
Yeah, that'll be item 6.3.
Okay. Uh, next up we have item 6.2, an action item, summer tax collection resolution. Mr. Bruton?
Thank you, President McFarland. This is an annual request that we ask the board to adopt on behalf of the Midland Public Schools. There are no numbers that we are asking you to approve this evening. This is simply us asking the city to continue to collect taxes at the summer and the winter rate. If we wish them to collect taxes in the summer by January the 1st of each year, we have to have a board resolution asking them to do such. And so in your packet, you'll see that official resolution. And we would appreciate you considering adopting this resolution so we can continue to collect summer taxes in the city of Midland.
All right, thank you. Um, I'll accept the motion, please.
Make a motion to approve item 6.2 for summer tax collection in the city of Midland.
Support? Okay, motion, Mr. Roush, support, Mr. Hatfield. Any additional discussion regarding item 6.2? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. All right, next action item, we have item 6.3, this is the maintenance van purchase. Mr. Bruton?
Thank you. Uh, per trustee Blasey's comments, this is actually a reorder. Um, we did have this order last year about this time, um, for the exact same model except a different year of vans. And due to supply chain issues, that order was unable to be fulfilled. Uh, we still do need the vans. Our maintenance department, um, is in, um, need of these vehicles. So we are asking that you approve us ordering the 2023 version of these vans from Longhamer Ford. These are F2, excuse me, Transit 250 high-roof cargo vans, and they also include contractor packages. Um, the total price for these is $52,059 each, or a grand total of $104,118 for the total order. And if this is approved, we'll be using the general funds that we've rolled over, rolled over from last year.
Okay, thank you.
I move that we approve item 6.3, maintenance van repurchase.
Support?
Motion by Mr. Hatfield, support by Mr. Roush. Any additional discussion regarding item 6.3, the maintenance van purchase or repurchase?
Where do we stand in updating the fleet? Are these two of the last pieces or we still have more to go?
We definitely have more to go. Um, I'd get you more specific, but there's for sure two more vans out there that are, um, not, in the 90s vintage that probably need to go, so we're not there yet.
Okay. Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you very much. Next up, item 6.4 is an action item, gifts totaling $7,000. Mr. Bruton?
Thank you, there is one gift this evening that we need your approval to be able to accept on behalf of MPS. This gift comes from the Woodcrest PTO in the amount of $7,000 that is distributed amongst their teachers to buy school supplies.
I move that we approve item 6.4, gifts from, uh, Woodcrest PTO in the amount of $7,000.
Support?
Motion by Mr. Hatfield, support by Mr. Roush. Any additional discussion or comments regarding item 6.4? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you very much. Okay, next is an information item, 6.5, gifts totaling $22,708.98. Mr. Bruton?
Thank you, um, we are acknowledging 23 gifts this evening, as you said, totaling just over $22,700. And as always, this represents a wide range of items from robotic supports to music lessons, to books from our friends at the Islamic Center, to supports for at-risk students, to also donation to enhance our professional development by providing meals for our staff, um, from the MC insurance agency. All of our donors will of course be honored in our broadcast credits and in correspondence from the Board of Education. We greatly appreciate our community's continued support each and every single month.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, next is human resources, and I just want to note that there are no committee minutes or study minutes to read. Uh, item 7.1 is information only, Mr. Jester?
Thank you. So we have three names, uh, to share tonight. The below staff members announced their retirements.
As of the effective dates listed. Mary Angus, paraprofessional currently serving at Central Park. Her effective retirement date is December 2nd, 2022. Ms. Catherine Spalding, been a teacher at Jefferson Middle School. She's actually already, um, since retired, October 31st, 2022 was the effective date. Then also Kimberly Wood, she's administrative assistant in benefits in the business office here at the admin building. Her effective retirement date is December 16th, 2022. And I can continue?
Yes, please.
And, uh, item 7.2, uh, the board and staff extend their deepest sympathy to the following family. Uh, the family of Ms. Alice Strange. Alice Strange passed away October 13th, 2022. She served as a social worker for Midland Public Schools and retired in 1997. She had 11 years of service with the district.
Thank you. Okay, next is, uh, Section 8, uh, correspondence to and from the Board of Education. Item 8.1 is a list of letters from the Board of Education. Uh, item 8.2 contains a list of letters, uh, to the Board of Education, uh, from the three individuals and, and two individuals and one entity, uh, listed on the agenda. Next is item 9, scheduled activities, this is information only. Uh, 9.1 is a list of our remaining minutes for the school year, December 19th, 2022. And the following dates until they are approved at the January 9th organizational meeting are also listed for 2023. Please note, uh, that April 17th has a budget workshop meeting beginning at 6:30. And that will bring us to item 10, study discussion. Uh, just as a matter of housekeeping, item 10.1 is the, uh, Board of Education Officer Nominating Committee. That committee will consist of Mr. Roush, Mr. Hatfield, and every sitting president, uh, which will be myself. Item 10.2, uh, are there any points of clarification that, uh, we need to go over on things that were discussed tonight? No? Okay. Um, before we move into closed session, for everybody who was able to stay with us, uh, I hope you all enjoy time with your families this holiday. Eat more than you should and laugh until it hurts. Have a wonderful, wonderful Thanksgiving if we don't see you when we come out of closed session. Thank you. Senator will take a motion?
I move that we go into closed session for...
Right here. Superintendent evaluation.
For superintendent evaluation.
And board, board president.
And board president.
Support?
Okay, motion by Mr. Hatfield, support by Mr. Roush. Any additional discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, we are in closed session.